Hello, everybody. Welcome to this meeting of the South Kingston Town Council. Regular session. It's 7:30 PM, Monday, November 23rd. And our first item of business, as always, is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk take the roll?
Council President Collins.
Here.
Council Vice President Haley.
Here.
Councilwoman Cloud.
Here.
Councilwoman Gledhill.
Here.
Councilman Veale.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. Item four on our agenda is the approval of minutes of previous meetings.
I make a motion to approve item four, both A and B, A being the work session from November 9th, and B being the regular session from November 9th, 2015.
Second. So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Item five is our consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously as well. Item six on our agenda tonight is licenses. Six A is a resolution granting a victraling license for the year beginning December 1st, 2015, to DNR, Inc., doing business as Dan's Place South, 2089 Kingston Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, application by Daniel Hebert, President, 164 Braecart Hill Road. And please state your name for the --
Mr. President, Donald J. Packer, an attorney in South Kingston, representing the applicant, Dan Hebert, Roy Ring, are here requesting the victraling license, which is tied to the liquor license request, which is later on the agenda. We can go through the presentation on the menu now, or we can defer it to later.
Well, you're at the podium now. Might as well do it now.
Okay.
Would you better in the public hearing?
I was just going to suggest, Don, I think it makes sense for you to make the presentation during a public hearing.
At this point, on the victraling license?
No, for the liquor license.
That's what I was anticipating.
Okay.
For that?
The question you do is to continue license six A until the completion of the public hearing, and at that time, you could take appropriate action on it at that time.
Okay. I'm going to move item six A until after the public hearings. And then we'll go to item six B, a resolution granting a victraling license to PJ's Pizza, 1202 Kingston Road, Peasdale, Rhode Island, applicant by Jason Malinfont, 28-page drive Coventry.
How you doing?
Hi. And just state your name for the record.
Jason Malinfont.
So I think maybe we're all familiar with PJ's Pizza, but tell us anyway.
I worked for PJ's Pizza years ago, and I just recently perished visit. And I'm looking to bring back what I had learned years ago, working under Peter.
Has the menu changed at all?
I'm keeping the same menu. What I'm looking at doing is bringing some specials in, but keeping a lot of the same stuff.
Any questions from members of the council?
What are your hours?
The hours are going to stay the same that they previously had it, 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve, under licenses, number six B, a resolution for victraling license for PJ's Pizza.
I second that.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Good luck very much.
So you sign out there.
Yes.
Thank you.
You'll see us in there getting pizza.
I'll say.
Yeah, thank you.
Item seven, under public hearings, we'll open the first. It's a public hearing relative to an application for a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingston, in accordance with the general laws of 1956, as amended, as follows: Class B victraler liquor license, application for a class B victraler liquor license by DNR, Inc., doing business as Dan's Place South, 2089 Kingston Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, by Daniel Hebert, president for the dining rooms and bar, and as further defined in a site plan on file in the town clerk's office. Said license is contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, and the correction of any fire code violations. Welcome back, Mr. Packer.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Donald Packer, representing the applicant, Dan Hebert, the applicant with me, and Roy Ring, his partner, will be operating the restaurant. What we're looking to do is obtain a liquor license to open a new restaurant at 2089 Kingston Road, the site of the closed Cucina Twist and many other establishments. We have a rendering of what is proposed to be the new building, once it's been constructed. The owners have entered into a sales agreement for the purchase of property, subject to some approvals. We've submitted application for development plan review to the planning board, and we appeared before them August, September, October, and in November received a master plan. We're going to go to the zoning board, because we need some relief from the zoning board for the parking on a small lot. Prossman Engineering has done an enormous amount of design work for the site. I think the issues that you're concerned about is the operation of liquor license in the restaurant. With that, I'd ask Dan to step up and be sworn and give us some information on the restaurant.
Dan Hebert, owner of Dan's Place in West Greenwich.
Dan, can you generally describe for the council what type of restaurant you're trying to propose there?
It's a full-service, family restaurant.
And what changes necessitate the tearing down of the existing structure?
Well, there's probably many reasons, but just the way that my operation runs, it wasn't feasible to go ahead and remodel that.
And what's the general's anticipated seating capacity for the restaurant?
We're looking at around 180, 190. Looking at, as far as entertainment or --
That'll be my next question. What type of a menu are you proposing? We filed the menu with the application. The council members have a copy of that menu. That's the menu from your West Greenwich operation. You do operate another restaurant in the state?
Yes.
Is that correct? How long have you operated that restaurant?
Six years in that location.
Okay. And just generally describe, they have copies of it, the public may not. Describe your menu for me, please.
It's basically an all-American menu. I mean, I get things from ribs, to seafood, to steaks, all different pastas, salads.
You anticipating the same menu here?
Yes.
And what would you like, what do you anticipate your hours of operation to be for the restaurant?
We'd like to stay open, well, we'd like to be open till 1:00 at the beginning, and then kind of see where we fall in with the neighbors, and, you know, what type of business that we bring in. So, you know, my general feeling is to try to close a little bit earlier than what I am in West Greenwich. So if we can close at 11:00 during the week, not saying that if there's a URI game, or if there's, you know, an event going on at URI, you know, we'd like to stay open for the overflow after.
Okay. And the hours of operation may also adjust seasonally, depending upon the demand, in winter or summer?
Yes.
And you have a number of employees, so?
Yes.
If you can let them go, you're going to let them go. If you need them, you're going to keep them. Is that?
That's correct.
And basically, as we start out, that's the best information?
Right. Yes.
Okay. Entertainment. Do you have entertainment at your other place?
Yes.
Do you anticipate having entertainment at this restaurant?
Yes.
What type of entertainment?
Right now, I do karaoke on Monday nights. You know, we've had trivia. At this location, I like to just keep it to an acoustical type, one, two-man person, just to have some ambiance in the background. At my location now, I have full bands. It's, you know, it's loud, and, you know, I just don't want to bring that to this location.
You have much more space at the other place, though.
Yes.
You have a much more outdoor space with a lot of other activities.
That's correct.
So when you say acoustical, is that going to be weekends?
Right.
Every night, just weekends generally?
No, weekends. Like I do now, it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday. It could be limited to, you know, maybe a Friday or a Saturday.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, Mr. Hebert?
Any questions from the council members?
I have a couple of questions. So the current parking lot, you said you're changing the structure of it, or how large it is? How is that changing, going from how many parking spots to how many?
We can't count the parking spaces on the current lot.
Okay.
Because they're not lined, or counted, or numbered. We are tearing down two single-family homes in the back of that property, if you're familiar with it.
Mm-hmm.
So we're opening up a lot more area that now would be encumbered by those single-family homes, but we don't really know how many parking places.
Okay.
I've been there plenty of times, and people will park, leaving spaces, so you really can't.
Right. And then you were talking about entertainment. I was looking at my paper when you were discussing it. Did you say that there is a deck, there'll be outdoor space?
No.
No, that's at your other location?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That was my other question. That's it.
I have a question. Really quick. When and if this does go through for you, what is your anticipation in terms of the date that it will potentially open?
If all goes well.
You can answer that one.
That's a good question. We still have planning board, zoning board, planning board, DOT, DEM, tear-down, construction. We're probably looking at six to eight months, minimum.
I will say, that's a, I remember it as Iggy's, which many old folks do. And it's a great location, and it's a shame that it's been dormant for so long. It would certainly be nice to see something vibrant there, so, you know, I hope it all goes well for you.
Yeah, this rendering is beautiful.
Thank you.
It really is.
Very pretty.
And I think it could be a great complement to the university, or to parents that come in to either visit, or for graduations, or things of that nature, because we know when URI graduation goes on, every place gets booked so fast. So it's nice that it's close enough to the campus, too, and I think that would give you a good steady traffic flow that might be coming in to visit you.
Parking always was an issue at that location, though, and people used to, you know, double-park in and do all kinds of crazy things. I suppose that having no lines for parking was part of the problem, but it's good that you're working to solve that.
We've got more than enough parking required under the zoning, and it's all lined and designated, with the handicap spaces. We're controlling the entrance and the exit at Route on 138 right now, which is basically, I want to wait, which is basically wide open. You just drive in, drive out.
Right.
So we're going to have a controlled ingress and egress, so DOT's okay with it. We have their approval, so I think it's going to be a huge improvement.
And I think we have the latest, if I'm not mistaken, floor plan, which was dated October 9th.
Yes. We were, the floor plan that I submitted with the initial application is for Cucina Twist, because we need a location to get the liquor license granted to, but I wanted you folks to see what we were looking at. But we will have to transfer that to the new location, once it's constructed. But we need the liquor license for the back.
Don, what is the square footage of the new building?
Fifty-six or 5,700 square feet.
Is there anything to add from the town's perspective, Steve?
What I'm sure is on the record was the fact that what's before you tonight is the license for the existing building that is not anticipated to be used, and that before, if that building is constructed, before it can be used for alcohol services, it will need to be backed before the council. And I think that's the only thing we needed to place on the record.
That's our understanding, and that's what we're trying to do. We wouldn't have applied for the liquor license until we had the building, but it's not an option.
All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen. At this point, are there any comments from the public on this item? All right, seeing none?
Nope, you see one.
Oh, sorry.
Scott Narkovicious. I live at 5 Westwood Road, right across the street, pardon me, from the establishment, and I just want to say, from the public, we're looking forward to somebody that's, you know, willing to invest in the community, and it's not really great what's across the street right now, and to have something, you know, a little bit nicer over there, some developments, some investment, I think would be good, so just want to make that known.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Do I hear a motion to close this public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing, seven A.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Should we, Mike, do we wait until after 13A?
I think what you should do is, you, yes, so we need to now go to 13A, I'm sorry, to increase the number of licenses.
In that case, I'm going to bring forward item 13A, which is a resolution affirming or amending the town's liquor license rules and regulations, section one. The current number of licenses for each class shall be authorized as indicated below unless changed by a majority vote of the town council. And we'd be looking at moving class B victraler to 26. Is that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to amend the number of class B victraler licenses to, from 25 to 26.
Second.
Sorry.
So moved. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. And with that, we'll go back to item 7A. Entertain a motion.
Six A.
Seven A. Seven A first, then you.
Okay. I make a motion to approve item 7A for class B victraler liquor license, application for the liquor license by DNR, Inc., DBA Dan's Place, 2089 Kingston Road in Wakefield, by Daniel Hebert. Said license is contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, and the correction of any fire code violations.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. And now, back to item 6A, resolution granting a victraling license for the year beginning December 1st, 2015, to DNR, Inc., doing business as Dan's Place South, subject to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, application by Daniel Hebert. Don't worry about coming forward. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve item number 6A for the victraling license for the year beginning December 1st, 2015, with the issue, as it's subject to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy.
I second that.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck.
And with that, we're back to public hearings. 7B, we'll open the public hearing relative to proposed amendments to the town code, chapter seven, fire prevention and protection, article two, open burning as shown on exhibit one attached to your agenda. And Steve, do you want to go into this?
Yes. This evening, we are here to replace existing articles, sections seven dash 16, 17, 18, and 19, and replace that in full with what is presented under exhibit one. The existing article in the town code that deals specifically with fire prevention and protection is very limited. It has a definition that talks about prohibition for burning of garbage, and then defines garbage under the state statute. It also provides that no public burning on a street is allowed. Outside of that, it really does not provide regulatory authority for the fire departments, should there be a concern with either open fires or bonfires. The revised ordinance that's presented in exhibit one provides specific definitions on what a bonfire is, a recreational fire, and an open fire, and when a permit is necessary. It still does prohibit garbage from being burned in any open fire or an incinerator. And it also talks about that it's unlawful to burn leaves within a public street. The regulation of open fires is a section which now states when fire permits will be issued, and what during, during what terms, and during what times of the day. So at this point, the code will define that fire permits can only be issued between October 1st and February 28th, between 7:00 AM and 11:00. And you can't have any fire permits on leap year. And on March 1st through September 30th, you can get a permit between 5:00 o'clock and 11:00 PM at night. And open fires shall consist only of brush or untreated wood or leaves. And the reason for this is that treated woods give off fumes that may be toxic. So this defines what is allowed under that fire permit. It also sets limitations. Bonfires cannot be within 50 feet of a structure, and the burning of construction materials other than clean, untreated woods are prohibited. One of the key components and changes here is the definition of the open fires, and the fact that the open fires now have limitations of being no less than 25 feet from a structure, or 10 feet from a property line. This has become an issue over the last few years, where there's been a number of fire pits that have come into the community, and their proximity either to the structure or to adjacent properties come under question. Fire department wanted to provide regulation, so that their forces, when the complaint came in, would be able to have an ordinance that provided a, provided a direction on whether something was appropriate or inappropriate in use. It also provided when recreational permits were not necessary for recreational fires. And it defined the size of what stone rings can be. Stone rings can only be as large as 30 inches, and they have to be at least seven feet away from the materials that are being used to feed that fire. There's also definitions as far as when a fire attendant is necessary, what people need to do if they get a fire permit, and there's also a section dealing with the exceptions that the chiefs can issue based on weather conditions that determine some type of public risk, existing dry conditions during summer months. There's also a provision here on the cooperation between the police department and the fire department, should a complaint of public nuisance or a public safety issue be brought forward. That's what this ordinance will do. I'm pleased to say that both of our fire chiefs are here this evening, Chief Conney with Union Fire District, and Chief Barrington from Kingston Fire District, and certainly I'd like to make sure that they have an opportunity to comment on the ordinance as presented.
Sure. Before we get to that, any questions from the council members?
I do have a question. What about people who've built fire pits that might be closer than 10 feet to the property lines? Will they have to move them, or are they exempt from this?
They should move them.
Yes, okay.
But if the fire department finds a fire pit that is too close to a building, they're going to tell them that they need to move it.
And what is the recourse if somebody is in violation of this? Do they just get charged with the public nuisance, or is there a fine, or?
If it went all the way, we'd go to a district court hearing. But I think most times, if people are told that something is posing a public safety hazard on their property, they're going to work with the fire departments to resolve that issue.
All right. Any other questions? All right. I don't know which chief wants to come up here first. Just state your name for the record, sir.
John Conney, chief of the Union Fire District.
How are you doing?
The ordinance we had before was, like Mr. Alfred said, was minimum, and at the request of Chief Vesbia, Nathan and I kind of sat down, looked at other communities, what they did as far as open burning and whatnot, took what we liked out of theirs, and incorporated into ours. So I think this has really stepped up our control of what and where you can and burn.
Wonderful. Any questions? Great. Well, thank you for your work putting this together.
You're welcome.
Chief Barrington.
Nate Barrington, Kingston Fire. Pretty much what Jack said. I think the biggest thing is if one of our chief officers needs to have a fire put out, this actually gives them the capacity to do it. I mean, prior to this, a homeowner could just say, you know, go pound sand, you know, and this at least gives them something to, they can say there's actually a burning rule.
Great. Questions? Any questions? No. Thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this item? Please come forward.
I'm Sarah Cotrell. I live in Wakefield, and I want to thank the chiefs, Chief Vesbia, for putting forth an improved policy on open burning. I would just request that under section seven dash 20, A and C, that there would be a distance requirement, as there is a distance requirement under the open burning. Both Narragansett and North Kingston has a distance requirement for this type of burning, and I would just ask the town to incorporate that into these new improved guidelines. I've had, I've had a unique situation over the last three years, and I feel the buffer between a property line and the fire would create, cut down on law hassles that having a fire right next to a property line creates. So I'm hoping that the town and the chiefs would consider making that amendment to the existing guidelines.
You said 720A and C?
Yeah, and that's the recreational fires and the stone rings. Again, both North Kingston and Narragansett, for these types of fires, they have, I think one town has seven feet, another town has 10 feet, and I think at least a seven-feet buffer between a property line on a fire would be advantageous to the safety of this community.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Would one of the chiefs come up and comment on that idea?
We have no problem if you want to make it 10 feet.
That would be Item C instead of seven feet, 10 feet?
No, those are materials that should be stored.
Just to add, the 10 feet from property line?
Yes.
Yeah, if you look up to Section F and the section above it where it says, under open fires, it would just kind of bring that 10-foot from any property line down into Section 720 for recreational fires.
Thank you for your input. And I think that that was a great idea.
And Mike, you getting this?
What I'm going to suggest is if the council wants to go in this direction, since the fire chiefs have no issue, for 720A, it would read recreational fires should not require a permit, comma, are only permitted on private residential property, and shall be at least 10 feet from any property line. And that same language would be added to C on stone rings. We'd eliminate the "and" between seven feet and the ring, put the "and" at the end of 30 inches in diameter, and add "and shall be at least 10 feet from any property line." I think that would cover it.
Are there any other comments? Great. Then I will...
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second? So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. And now I would entertain a motion to pass this...
You can move to adopt it as amended.
Adopt the ordinance as amended.
I make a motion to approve Item 7B with proposed changes under Section 720A and 720C as have been adopted.
Second?
So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. And that brings us to Item 9 on our agenda, comments from interested citizens. And this is that time in the evening when anyone from the public can come up to the podium and state your name. Tell us how you think we could be doing our jobs better, or just to tell us how good a job we're doing.
Good evening. Bill Forbes. I just want to remind the general public that if they'd like to come to the Elks on Thanksgiving Day, they still have time to call. The number is 783-7819. And we are still taking reservations, or if you are stuck at home, it will be delivered. Alls we need your name, your address, and your phone number. Thank you.
You, Bill.
Thank you.
Get back to work.
Any other comments from the public? Comments from council members?
I would just like to say, I think all of the council members had the opportunity today to go to the Johnny Cake Center and help pass out Thanksgiving dinners. I know last year they served over 400 families, which is incredible. And from how busy it was today, I think there was probably that many, if not more. It's a great opportunity for us all to get out and see everyone, and right before the holidays. But truly, big thanks to the Johnny Cake Center and all the folks there. They do a wonderful job year-round, and they certainly shine on the holidays. So thank you.
I just wanted to say, I heard about the Solarize event that we... The informational meeting that was had last week, and I heard that it was packed in here, that there was tons of community turnout. And I meant to ask during the work session, I don't know if they have plans maybe to come back and do another one, because I heard from some people that actually didn't stay because they couldn't find a place to sit. So Steve, I don't know if you know if they had suggested that.
I was at that meeting, and it's one of the few times that every seat in the council chamber was taken. And we brought chairs in as well, and we had people sitting up at the council table as well. So certainly, we had a great deal of interest. All of the information that was given out that evening is accessible through the website.
Okay.
And if people want to meet with anybody from the company, that can be arranged. All we need to do is get in touch with the planning department.
Okay.
I'm not aware that they're coming in for a second meeting. I think what they want to do is to work with the applicants that are being filed at this point, start doing the preliminary assessments.
Great.
For the property. But certainly, anybody who didn't get what they needed, if they start with the planning department, we can get them to the right people. But so far, the program looks as if there's a great deal of interest.
Wonderful.
And we're hopeful that it will carry through on each of the different steps, because it's a long process. We're hopeful that it will work for those folks.
Great.
Thank you. I was going to ask for an update on that during the town manager's report.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Any other comments from council members?
Just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Safe holiday season if you're traveling.
Yes, ditto. I think I see Steph back there at the back of the room, and I know that she's going to be leaving the service of the independent, so I just wanted to recognize her for covering us for however long it's been.
Yes. Tonight's her very last council meeting. I'm sure she's so sad.
Have fun in Charleston.
All right. With that, let's move on to the town manager's report.
I wish everybody in town a wonderful and happy Thanksgiving.
Can I say D.O. too?
Well, we do have an appointment to make tonight, which is our next item on the agenda, Item 12.
I make a motion to Item 12A, a resolution appointing Amanda Mather to the Partnership for Prevention Board for a term to expire June of 2018.
Second?
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Wait until Item 13G. And then we are now at Item 13C, a resolution authorizing an award of contract to Pharo Technologies of Atlanta, Georgia, for the purchase of a total station package for accident and crime scene reconstruction, complete with all necessary hardware, software, and training for a turnkey operation in an amount not to exceed $14,495, and is further described in a memorandum from the police chief to the town manager dated November 17, 2015, entitled Bid Recommendation: Total Station Package for Accident Crime Scene Reconstruction.
As the chief mentioned in his memorandum, the existing measuring device that the department uses goes back to 1999. The software with it was last updated in 2009 and is no longer serviceable. What we're looking at is placement with a best-of-breed for this type of equipment and software. It's called Total Station. It provides diagramming, hardware and software in two components. We've seen use of it both in the town in Narragansett as well as in the city of Warwick. Our detectives have worked with Narragansett as far as use of the equipment. It's a sole-source software that we'll be acquiring with the camera setup that's necessary for it. Full funding will be provided either through the federal asset forfeiture fund that the town has. That's where drug materials that are confiscated, the value of the equipment that is returned through the attorney general's office to the town, portion of it. We'll be using $8,495 from the forfeiture account, as well as a grant of $6,000 for the overall cost of the equipment. It's another step in our moving forward with providing for a rehab of all of our technology within the public safety function, as well as the community in general.
Excellent. Sounds like a good deal.
Motion to approve Agenda Item 13C.
Second?
I had a question, actually.
So moved. Discussion?
I was wondering, you mentioned during the work session that for somebody to testify using this software, they have to be trained and certified in its use?
That's correct.
Is there a cost associated with training and certifying the officers for that?
It's included within the package that we're...
It is. Okay. That was it.
Any other questions?
There'll be four offices that'll be certified under the program for use of the equipment.
Great.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Item 13D is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Dane Tech Greenville Avenue of Johnston, Rhode Island, for the installation of a surveillance and network video recording system at the animal shelter in accordance with all bidding specifications, in an amount not to exceed $13,528, including a contingency, and is further described in a memorandum from the police chief to the town manager dated November 17, 2015, entitled Bid Recommendation: Surveillance and Network Video Recording System Animal Shelter.
This is another purchase that we're looking at. It'll provide 10 cameras within the animal shelter program. Of those 10, four will be installed inside the building, and six will be installed on the exterior of the building. There'll also be two access points within the building for monitoring of each of the cameras. We had four bidders. Dane Tech is the lowest qualified bidder. The full cost of this program will be paid for through funds held in the animal shelter benefit fund. We need this type of security enhancements for the facility so that we can monitor what goes on during the off-hours, as well as to protect the animals that we have custodialship of.
Excellent. Do I hear a motion? Are any questions?
I have a question. I'm sorry. I know Narragansett uses our facilities as well, and you said that they pay us about $70,000 a year to use it. I didn't know if there was any potential for cost sharing with this system, or do you think it's included in that $70,000 they pay every year?
We look at what our costs are, and they pay a proportionate share. So we do, to get to the $70,000, consider capital depreciation on the facility.
Okay.
So they're paying more than their fair share in terms of... They're paying a fair share, but they're also paying when we have capital enhancements that are being done there.
Great.
The other thing, too, is that the Banana Fund, which is going to be paying for this, is based on potential gifts that have been provided through people that have animals coming from Narragansett. So that fund itself really is gifting that's being used to enhance the service.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve Page 6, Item D, as presented.
Second?
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Item 13G is, well, a resolution appointing Karen Stein and Dennis Migno to serve as South Kingstown representatives on the Wild and Scenic Rivers Study Committee for the Wood Pocketuck Watershed Association, as further described in a memorandum from the director of planning to the town manager dated November 18, 2015, entitled Consideration of Appointments for Wood Pocketuck Wild and Scenic Rivers Study Committee.
We provided the council back in September with a packet of information from Wood Pocketuck Watershed Association, asking for two appointees from South Kingstown for this study that will be conducted over the next three years. They've asked similarly for the other 13 communities that are within that watershed area. We've had four residents express interest that are members of the Watershed Association. Two of them have specifically provided formal applications to the town that you're in receipt of this evening. The first meeting of the subcommittee is anticipated on December 3. So we're suggesting to the council, consider appointments of those first two. If the other two or anyone else comes forward and asks for appointment, Wood Pocketuck has indicated that they certainly would like to see alternates that could be named by the council, because they're looking for full participation, if they can, from the various areas. Since we have two of the three rivers that run through South Kingstown that are resident to that watershed, it's important for us to have membership on this committee.
Is there anyone present to speak to this matter? All right.
I make a motion under Item 13G. The motion would read, the South Kingstown Town Council will hereby appoint Karen Stein of 201 Whitehorn Drive and Dennis Migno of 129 Queens River Drive to serve as South Kingstown representatives on the Wild and Scenic Rivers Study Committee for the Wood Pocketuck Watershed.
Second?
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to those two. Item 13H is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Blue Electrical Services of Whitford Street, Wakefield, for town-building fire alarm testing services for the quarter-ending period of November 30, 2015 to August 31, 2018, according to the terms and conditions of the bid specifications, in an amount not to exceed $5,698 per year, and is further described in a memorandum from the fire alarm superintendent to the town manager.
There's 18 municipal facilities that have fire alarm systems that need to be tested by a certified third party. The town has gone out for quotes on this. We've received proposals from a number of companies. The lowest qualified bidder is Blue Electrical out of Wakefield, Rhode Island. The price, as noted, is $4,999 for the quarterly inspections, and there's a semi-annual, which would be $6,99. So the net cost per year would be $5,698. We listed as three years. It's really two years and nine months that this contract would be good for. Recommend the council approve as presented.
Motion to approve Agenda Item 13H.
Second?
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Item I is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to AmeriGas Propane Inc., 460 North Gulf Road, King of Prussia, Pennsylvania, for gas liquid propane, according to the terms and conditions of the State of Rhode Island Master Price Agreement. Bid specifications at an increment of $20.278 per gallon, and is further described in a memorandum from the financial controller to the town manager.
We're recommending that the council continue to approve use of the master price agreement that the state has for the purchase of the liquid propane. The price that's listed there is an increment, which means that we get the price from the Journal of Commerce for the cost coming into Providence on a per-gallon basis, and you add that 27.8 cents per gallon for delivery purposes. This is the same contract that we've been under since May of 2012. So we would request that you approve it in accord with the state master price agreement.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve 13I as presented according to the master price agreement.
Second?
So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to the end of our agenda, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
Second?
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. That motion carries unanimously as well.